Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Roll call of officers.
Keith King.
Here.
Ann Price.
Here.
Mike Streeter.
Here.
Randy Stutz.
Here.
Mike Will.
Here.
Stanford pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizen participation? If you could come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Louis Klein, 701 Wisconsin Avenue. And I'm here about the parking ban.
Okay, we're gonna discuss that tonight right now, or it's one of the ordinances we're approving?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Can we, you wanna just address it? We can address that when we get down to the ordinance that we're looking to approve tonight. You can address that at that time. We'll ask for comments if you wanna just, that way we can respond to your concerns. Or if you just wanna speak your piece now, and, you know, that's up to you.
Well, you know, I've been there twenty-eight years. And if there's a safety concern, why don't you go with a four-way stop?
Okay.
Because half the people stop there now, even though there isn't a stop. And granted, in the summertime, there's ample parking. But what about wintertime? Where you gotta park even or not. You're taking away a whole parking, two whole parking spots.
Okay.
You know, I think a four-way stop would be a lot better all the way around.
Okay. And we'll discuss this further when we get down to that. And we can't respond as citizens to be heard. So, we can discuss it further when we get down to the ordinance that we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry? Yeah, and you're welcome to get up and speak again if you'd like, and participate in that conversation. Did you have something?
Thank you.
You bet.
Ken Mulchman, I live at 107 Indiana Avenue. I'd like to discuss the new stop sign at the intersection of Lake Shore and Indiana Avenue. It used to, Indiana used to have the stop sign, and now they added the stop sign to Lake Shore. The gentleman that proposed that stop sign there said that he gets, people come racing through there. And when he stopped waiting for traffic to turn into his driveway, people pass him on the left from behind. They don't see him because of his bushes. They pass him. If that was the case, I believe that there'd be had on accidents in that intersection. Because if he's waiting for some oncoming traffic, and he passes him on the left, that would be a conflict of interest and an accident. I propose that he actually cuts down his bushes, because I've heard far more complaints about his bushes. And not, that there should be stop signs there if people speed through there. I know that the officers sit there to enforce speed. They sit down on the 200 block in Indiana Avenue as well as the 100 block. The other thing is, he did cut down the end of his bushes, however, myself and my tenant and other people have discussed with cars, I mean, we do not have low cars. We have conventional vehicles, a Prius, Chevy Bold. And we still cannot see through the bushes to see pickup trucks oncoming. So I would like the bushes, I guess I'm proposing that the stop sign be removed even after the bushes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any action I can take further to get citizen signatures to find out if the stop sign is more appealing, or the bushes are more appealing?
Well, we'll talk about that a little bit further down also, when we get to that portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, any other citizens to be heard? Lori?
Lori King, One Town Twin Lakes. I'm actually representing you as director of North Fondleek Pool. And I would like to know if we can get the pool parking lot, the parking situation added to the next month, or next meeting's agenda. I know this has been a topic of discussion pretty much every summer. What I am proposing is a compromise regarding parking in that pool parking lot, to change it to say that it is a patron-only parking lot from Memorial Day to Labor Day for the pool. I know last year, I read the minutes from last year, it was commented that there's only a couple times a year where that parking lot is full. That is not the case anymore. Over the last three years, our pool pass amount has gone up, and gone up, and gone up. We sold five hundred and twenty-six passes last summer. That's a lot of kids at the pool. This summer alone, just for the first session of swimming lessons, which starts on Monday, and our swimming lessons run from 9:00 AM until 12:10 PM, I have eighty-five kids in that session. That's a lot of cars that need to park in that parking lot. I was there at, what, 1:30 today? There were thirteen cars in that parking lot. Our pool does not open. I was the only one there that belonged to the pool. I've had a discussion with Aaron Sadoff, because I know there's some kids that park in that school parking lot. As of Wednesday, school's a half day, and that will never be an issue again. Because as of the summer, the high school and the middle school are getting sixty-three additional parking places over there. So people, at no point in time should there ever be students, buses, or anybody that will park in that parking lot after Wednesday. It's mostly citizens that live in that area that are using that to park their cars. When I was at the pool Friday night, we had three hundred and sixty-three people at our opening night at the pool. I had at least three parents and two guards ask me about the parking, and why people get to park further. I don't believe we allow it at Optimus Park. I don't think we allow the neighbors to park in that parking lot. Village Park, we don't allow people, they do a park-and-ride type situation there, but it's just during business hours, Monday through Friday. It's never on the weekend, it's never at night, when the activities are going on. And I don't believe that the swimming pool parking lot should be any different. I did call Renée at the county today and asked what they do at the fairgrounds. And they said they have signs that say patron, parking only. And the only time they ever really have an issue is during the fair, and they do take people for parking there during the fair that are not in the pool. One of the solutions I could come up with to make it more, to make it easier for our police department too, is I would be willing to, like my guards, make them have the parking pass for there. I know there's sometimes, my guards on a Friday night or Saturday night, when they're done with work a bunch, we may run to Applebee's to get something to eat later at night, I would have them put parking passes in their windows, so that way if an officer goes by at 11:30 and there's a car in the parking lot, they can at least see that's why it's there, if that makes it easier for the police department. But I would like to revisit the patron parking in the pool parking lot, if we can, at the next meeting. Like I said, just session one alone, I got eighty-five kids, and I'm not, and that's not full yet. It's very close to being full. And I just have heard a lot of comments regarding the parking. It used to be one or two cars in the parking lot, but I've never seen less than five now in that parking lot. And it's mostly neighborhood vehicles, and I understand that, especially during the wintertime. That's why I'm proposing we just, maybe we just change it from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Next year, the school will be done before Memorial Day. My plan is that we can make it work to be open by Memorial Weekend, especially after this one being ninety degrees. But I still think that would be adequate. So if we could possibly add it to an upcoming soon agenda, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Lori. Can we get that on the next one? Can we get that on the next? Anybody else? First citizens to be heard? Announcements? Any announcements? I would just have one for North Fondiffest, it's June 16th. Again, we're doing just a half-day, starting at four, around 4:00, 4:30. And we're gonna be doing a pig roast, starting at that time, at the opening. And then, we're going to have Jake's band, was it Flybridge?
Yep.
Flybridge playing at 4:30 to...
Yeah, 4:30 to 7:00.
To 7:00 o'clock, for your dining entertainment. And then, Boogie and the Yo-Yos will be on at 8:00. And we'll have, we'll announce the winters for the raffle about 9:00, 9:15, when Boogie takes their break. And then, this year is our thirtieth anniversary. After we announce the winter, we're planning to have some fireworks, weather permitting, at 9:15. So, anybody wanna add anything? Mike? Lori, anything you wanna add, or?
Get your raffle tickets. I've had a lot of people ask for whether they're available. We have them here at the village offices. Heather has them over at the library, or they're at BP. So, raffle tickets are ten dollars each, grand prize is five thousand dollars. Get your raffle.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on down to library, Heather.
Thank you. We've been busy with our early registration, which started on Friday. And on Friday alone, we signed up a hundred and twenty-seven total registrants for the summer reading program, with seventy-two of them being children. And we're up to a hundred and eighty right now, as of today. So, we're busy doing a lot of registrations. And the most time-consuming is the children's, because we have a lot of extra programming that we're offering with craft activities. So if you are looking to get your children signed up for that, please do that early, because we've already got, our first sessions are full, and so we're going into the second craft session right now. So, if you're interested in doing it, get signed up right away. And we always have incentive prizes for the children that keep reading through the summer. And so after a week's time, we offer a little incentive. And this year, we had Jets Pizza donate a large number of coupons for the Four-Corner Pizza. And I just wanted to say thanks to everyone who's donating. We put them on each of our flyers that we give out to the children. So, it's a really, it's a really nice thing for the kids, so, that's all I have.
What's your theme for the summer, again?
It is Librarians Rock, so it's a music theme. So we've got a disco ball up, and some interesting other decorations up, so come and see it.
And your next library board meeting is the 13th?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Municipal court. All righty, administrator?
My first one to say, Lori, you had a great Friday night with the crowd that was there. I don't know if any records or anything else, but it sure looked busy, and, you know, as you had mentioned, it was ninety-degree weather up until then, and then it cooled off for that night. So it was still with that cooler weather, it still was a great turnout, so contribute, great job, Lori. Nick, Chris and I met with McCrone Insurance, or McCrone, there are brokers for finding your insurance. And something that's a little bit earlier than in the past, is sometime in late July, very early August, we'll probably have some quotes on as to what the health insurance is gonna be for 2018, '19. So that's a great start for helping with the budget process. Just to keep you an update on the corner of Prospect and Winnebago, where we're gonna have a stone marker there. It's a fairly large stone identifying the village of North Fondleek. I have hopes that that might be up by the end of June. So that's kind of what we're looking for. We met with Stewart's and the company that's providing the stone for us. Stewart's has volunteered to really take over that whole corner. They're gonna landscape, they're gonna do everything for that. And so it's a great opportunity for the village, and credit to Stewart's for doing that. We use a company called Payment Service Network, PSN. We're working with them to expand some of our options that we allow with that. We get a number of people that come in, are ready to pay, whatever might be for a permit or their utility bill, they pull out their plastic credit card, and we say, "Sorry, we don't take any." We send them over to the local bank, to the ATM machine. And with some of the new offerings, and very, very little cost, we're gonna look at offering that with Payment Service Network, PSN. We're working towards that right now. Thank you.
I have one quick question on that payment. Let's see, you have a hundred-dollar bill. What would the cost to be to process that with a credit card? You know, like a lot of times...
It won't cost us anything, they just add it on to the bill for the customer.
Well, it's taken on their side.
Yeah.
A lot of times, like, Alliant Energy is like $4.95 or something. That's speed pay, yeah.
I think it's like $2.50 or something, they'll have to pay.
It's like a point two-five percent or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just kinda curious. So it's back on the person who's using the card?
Yep.
Okay, that's good news. All right, thanks.
All right. Police Maron Darren.
Thank you. Continuing on with the good news, our new squad arrived, about three months later than it was supposed to, but it's here. So, we've got an appointment later this week to start the setup on that squad, the build-out. So hopefully, within about a week, week and a half, it should be ready to go and be out on the road. Between last Wednesday and today, we were able to accomplish our annual DATT training throughout the department. It's an annual refresher that we're required to do, and we were able to get everybody through that. And we continue to work on the hiring process. I have four more interviews scheduled this week, so continue to move forward with that process, hopefully get somebody hired and onboard soon. That's all I have.
Thanks, Darren. Fire EMS, Jake?
Thank you. Last week, we went to St. Paul's and Friendship's playground is not in order right now, and met with some children from there to see the engine in the ambulance. Where, you know what they contest, they won?
They had classroom contests to see who could win the most calendars for Oriole Nation.
Oh, okay.
And one classroom at Friendship had won it, but they donated, wanted to discuss in its classrooms to deserve something.
I went through the emails, and it didn't say why they won, so I was like, uh. So we went there on Wednesday. Principal Freeman emailed me today and asked if some of the kids could come and donate their time to watch our, some of our apparatus. So they'll be here Wednesday morning. Typically, we, that happens once a year, at the end of the school year, that those kids will come down and do that. Dan Voltner accepted a job with Kraye Fire. So he actually lives down there, and is less than a minute drive time for him now. So, he sent me his two weeks on the first, and will be done on the 15th. So I opened up the hiring process internally, and obviously externally. And my goal is to put a twelve-month hiring list together with those people that are on there, so that will be closing on the 15th. And for the pool, we are going to be putting together a similar event that we did last year. We're planning on July 11th, around 6:30 start time. Flight for Life will be there, obviously weather-dependent and call-dependent. But they're planning on being there, and Lori and I will be finalizing the rest of the plans, and we'll have flyers and whatnot closer to the date. So, that is all I have.
Was that your last year? Last year, was it the first year you did that?
Yep, yeah.
What was the attendance for that? Do you have any idea?
It was pretty good.
About two-hundred people, I think.
That's crazy.
There's quite a few people outside, too.
There were a lot of people outside.
So, it's pretty good.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
Anything for Public Works?
Sure.
All righty. Moving down to the consent agenda. Approve the following minute, the minutes of the following village board meeting, 5:21 2018. Approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn upon the respective funds. General Fund, forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents. North Fondiffest, one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. Library Fund, five hundred and twenty dollars and seventeen cents. EMS Fund, one thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Capital Projects, thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. Water Department, one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Waste Water Department, seven hundred and seven dollars and two cents. Community Development Authority, TIF, seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and one cent. Stormwater Fund, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, for a grand total of eighty-seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars and thirteen cents. And approve or deny operator's license for Nick Hold Tisher for Charlie's 90 Warner Street. What is your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Will, seconded by Stutz, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I had a couple questions. Page number four, dials on our body for 5102. Patrol truck repairs, was that the, what kind of repairs are we looking at?
During the winter months, while they were plowing snow, one of the wing on the new, the brand-new patrol truck hit, raised, I don't know if it was a shut-off, or, and it flew back and hit actually the cab, and the corner post on the cab, and everything was taken out, so that was fixed for that.
Makes sense, okay. One other quick question is that Waste Built, there was a page six, fifty-eight, fifty-five, and ninety-five gallon refuge cart. Page six.
What's, what was it called?
Waste Built, I think it was called.
Oh, there it is. In our budget, our capital budget, we had decided to buy some ninety-gallon refuse containers.
Right.
That's what those are.
Okay, so it was like, it looked like it was one ninety-five gallon refuge cart.
There's a hundred of them.
Okay, all right, I get it, thank you.
Randy?
Thank you. On page one, for imprint, six hundred dollars for water bottles. Jake, is that for, was that for EMS?
Correct, yeah.
EMS Week?
Yep.
That comes under what, the awards and recognition?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and that's budget, you have money, budgeted for that every year, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving down to ordinances. Number one, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-5. Ordinance amending section sixteen point zero-five, stop signs in North Fondleek.
Well, this is the one that was brought up for our first reading last board meeting, and it encompasses two different areas. One, that we talked a little bit about, citizens to be heard. The other one being on the corner of Chapman and McKinley, where there'll be a new exit driveway, in a sense, from Bessie Allen's school. So, the other one is, we had talked about earlier.
Okay. Mike?
Can you give us an update on, this is recommendations by the traffic committee, and who's on that committee?
It's Chief Pouch, Director Darren Parsons, Director Nick Leonard, and myself.
Okay. There's no board members on there, was there?
There's not, it's...
And when you guys discussed, how did then, the parking one come up for, or the stop sign? Okay, so the stop sign one, was that addressed? Darren, was that like a large concern that you guys seen out there with people taking that corner quickly? Is that, is that one of the...
No, because the intersection hadn't been open long enough for anybody to actually say that that was or was not the case at that point in time. A resident on the corner of the intersection contacted Nick Leonard and requested that a stop sign be installed at that intersection, based on the fact that it was now being a T-intersection. And the concern being that people coming, making that left turn off of there without having any reason to yield, would be coming around basically at full speed. And the, in what he shared with us, his concern was his driveway being right there, and the concern for a crash, because people wouldn't be necessarily looking before they make that turn, without having any reason to yield. So, in our meeting, in the Traffic Safety Committee talking about it, we took that into consideration, but we also basically just relied on the fact that it's not very often in any community that you'll come across a T-intersection where you're not required to stop before entering that intersection. And the fact that we changed this to a T-intersection, it just made sense that it should be a stop now that it is a T-intersection. And so that's basically the rationale that was used for making that decision, that determination.
And also, I know there was concern about the bushes that you mentioned on the northwest corner?
Yeah, and to address that issue, that really wasn't a huge part of this conversation. Actually, the trees on the other side were more of a part of the conversation, because there was some talk, at my suggestion, of removing the stop sign for traffic coming from the south on Indiana Avenue to go north, since we were installing, rather than make it a three-way stop, allowing that traffic to continue unimpeded. But because of the trees on the right, there was some express, some concern expressed that, you know, somebody could have a car in a blind spot or whatever, and so they thought it was better to make it a three-way stop. As far as the bushes go, and if that is impeding, that really wouldn't have a whole lot of bearing on whether or not to have the stop sign on Lake Shore Drive. It's something that we can certainly look into and can address, now that it's been brought as, brought to our attention as a concern. But it really didn't factor into that, that stop sign decision. It was more based on the fact that it's a T-intersection. You have the driveway for the person who actually filed the complaint, I'm sorry, it wasn't a complaint, who issued the letter and contacted Nick. And now there's a driveway that basically comes out right at that intersection to go back to, I don't know what the address is, but the one residence that is back there. And so, having that driveway basically in the middle of the intersection, again, justifies or warrants having that, a stop at that intersection, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have any...
Yes, so what recommendation would you give a residence, a resident, if they had issues with those bushes, would he make a formal written response? I mean...
No, actually, if somebody were just to call, whether it's me, whether it's Nick, it's just bringing it to our attention, we'll certainly, we'll go back and bring the Traffic Safety Committee together, we'll discuss it. I'll go out there, I'll take a look at it, probably have Nick do the same thing, just we have more than one opinion as to how far they should be cut back, you know, what needs there are, if it's just a matter of lowering them, whether it's bringing it back away from the intersection. I know that we've done that once before, I don't recall how long ago that was, but I know that we did require him to bring those back some degree prior to this whole project. So, we can take a look at it again, and if need be, we can do that again. I have not personally, in the police department, I have not had anybody contact me to express any concerns, whether it was, you know, there was a near miss, or just, you know, it's a problem for me, or anything like that. So, I haven't noted it at this point in time, that's not to say there isn't an issue. I'm certainly willing to go out there and take a look at it, and bring it to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Anything else, Mike?
Would it be appropriate for him, the gentleman, to make a formal request now, on this topic?
Just, he brought it to my attention, we'll do that anyhow. No, no reason, no need at all for a formal request. It's not that, not that big a deal, you know, traffic safety issues, I mean, if you have a concern, bring it to our attention, and we're gonna address it.
Perfect, thank you.
Chuck?
Just so I understand, you're feeling there's not a need to have a stop sign on Lake Shore Drive?
Correct.
So just keep the two on Indiana, one heading north, one heading south?
Yes.
Sir, any other discussion? Did we address your concerns? Okay, I mean, you know, we rely on our Traffic Safety Committee to bring us the information in their discussion, you know, that, you know, being the department heads and having checked out, so we're kinda relying on their expertise, so that's...
He brings up some other points as well, so.
Okay. Is everything addressed that you wanted to address, or is there anything else you wanted?
No, just the bushes for checking.
Okay, okay. Chuck?
I would guess, and I'm not speaking for the entire traffic committee, but I would guess that if that stop sign even stays on Lake Shore, those bushes still have to be trimmed, because there's a vision triangle there that probably needs to be enforced.
Correct.
So, just, just as FYI, so I'm, I guess, before we move on, what really is the direction here with this, then? Is this that we postponing any action on this, or are we moving ahead with this, and if something were changed?
Well, we're approving like, all of the changes, correct? Including the stop sign that...
They're on the agenda to be...
That's what's on the agenda, and that continues to be my recommendation. Like I said, you know, it wasn't, that recommendation was not based solely on that vision triangle or bushes. It was based just as much, if not more, on the fact that it's a T-intersection with two driveways. And so, I would recommend that we continue with the stop sign at that location. In addition to that, I will be more than happy to go out and then address that bush trimming issue. But that doesn't change my opinion of whether or not that stop sign should stay at that intersection.
So does everybody understand we're approving the changes that are made, that we discussed last week, and including the stop sign, permanent stop sign? I know it's temporary right now, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's temporary. It's out there right now, and there's flags on them right now, that we'll eventually not be there anymore as well, but...
So everybody understands that, right? Okay. Approving the changes, and approving the stop sign along with those changes.
Is there any other discussion on the other set of stop signs on McKinley?
Does anybody have any questions on that? Everybody understand that the school is redoing the driveway? It's gonna come out like it used to? Okay.
It used to be a stop sign.
Yes. Okay. So is there any more discussion? All right, I would need a motion to approve ordinance 2018-5.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-05.
Got a second?
One second.
I got a motion by King, second by Will to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash five, amending the sixteen point zero five stop signs in North Fondue Lake. Can I get a roll call please?
Keith?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you for stopping.
Yeah, thank you. Number two, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero six, an ordinance amending section sixteen point zero nine parking restrictions. Second reading. All right, so this is, this is the one.
That's the one west side of Wisconsin Avenue.
Okay, okay. Again, traffic safety committee met. Was that, was that a complaint that was brought also or?
Yes, it was both a complaint as well as personally identified issues by members of the traffic safety committee.
And, and village workers also?
Yeah, correct.
Frequently come up.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I know that someone mentioned that to me before we had that meeting, you know, possibly wanting a stop sign there. I know my mail route, I'm, that's currently part of the beginning of my route, and I know that's a, that's a tough corner when you come up too. Doesn't matter if it's winter or summer when you're coming up and if there's cars parked there and.
If there isn't though, it's still.
Dangerous corner, yeah.
Park back in front of the apartment building, you still miss.
And, and Darren, you guys discussed putting a stop sign there? I know we had, we talked.
We did, yeah. There was some discussion about it, but to be completely honest with you, if you turned that into a four-way stop, it would basically render the seven hundred block of Wisconsin Avenue impassable during the daytime hours. Right now, when you go through there at four, four-thirty in the afternoon, I wish Heather had stayed. When you drive through at four, four-thirty in the afternoon, there's barely room enough for one vehicle to make it through that with, with parking on both sides of the street. If you were to put a stop sign at that south end like there is at Harrison Street, it would bottleneck traffic in that seven hundred block so bad, nobody would be able to drive through there. As a matter of fact, when we talked about this, I made, I don't want to say a suggestion, but I said before I would express approval or my, my favor of adding a stop sign at that location, I would argue that we should take out the stop sign at Harrison Street so that Wisconsin Avenue was a through street and only stop traffic on, on, on Harrison Street, not on Wisconsin Avenue. Change that from a four-way stop because again, that seven hundred block is virtually impassable when those businesses are all in place. I, I drive a truck and every night when I leave work, I turn off of Garfield Street to go north on Wisconsin Avenue and I have to literally look down to Wisconsin, or down to Harrison Street to make sure that nobody's coming because if I pull out when there's cars parked on both sides of the street, somebody's going to end up putting their vehicle in reverse because there's no way two cars are going to be passing one another through that, through that area.
And we're just doing the two spaces?
It's just the two spaces. Doing, you know, going back to your question or concern about winter parking, which I do think is somewhat valid. But if you take away those two spots that we're talking about, that would be the odd side of the street. And in essence, what you're really talking about is instead of parking on Wisconsin Avenue at that point in time, you'd have to park on the south side of Garfield Street, and that's just not.
That's already full on the odd date because of people that live in the corner.
One vehicle, that doesn't make it full.
No, there's usually two or three.
There's usually one. And you have the parking in the alley behind your residence as well, so you don't have that, that's not a total.
Me and my wife, I'm on disability, we're both handicap parking. So now you're making my walk a hell of a lot further.
I don't want to argue with you because I hate to hear anybody being on disability, but I watch you walk up and down Wisconsin Avenue on a daily basis. I know you get around pretty well. Crossing the street's not going to.
Minutes to walk from here to there. That's not real well.
Well, I understand that, I really do, but the, but the fact of the matter is, what we have going on has been expressed by more than one person as a concern for traffic.
People driving the lawnmowers and the snow blowers, basically. They can go up the alley.
I'm not aware of what you're talking about, the people driving the lawnmowers and this.
Going to the library.
I just expressed a concern about it in my truck. I mean, it's not a matter of it sits too low, I can't see over cars. When, when that thing is parked full, it's virtually impassable. It's virtually impassable. Cliff, just to, just to give you an indication as to where I'm coming from, when the traffic safety committee met on this, I, I questioned whether or not the parking lot, that gravel lot between the library and the apartments would be significant enough parking, sufficient enough parking that we could completely make no parking on one side or the other of Wisconsin Avenue in the seven hundred block of Wisconsin Avenue. There is no way that street should be parking on both sides. There's too much traffic, it's too combined, too congested an area for that kind of, for that kind of parking situation and then having through traffic as well. It's just, it's a bad situation. It's growing. It's a lot, there's a lot more use.
Eliminate the parking on the other side.
But that part, but that side isn't creating the traffic vision problem at the stop sign.
If you put your.
It's your side.
Darren, is it, is there a parking restriction on Garfield on, like on the, around the corner? So like west of?
No, but during winter parking is, is what he brought up. You can only, you'd have to.
It's even odds, you'd have to move back and forth, so.
And, you know, as Cliff said, there is, I know, I know at least one. He lives there, he probably knows better than I do.
Yeah.
He's saying that there, that other people are already parking over there, so that could be a potential issue. I mean, it's possible.
Jake, are you experiencing anything with, with the larger vehicles in that area?
Yeah, it can be challenging to get through there, definitely. And if an engine or an ambulance is going down there, there's no, like Darren said, there's nobody else that's going to make it through there, so.
Can I just add one comment?
Yes.
I have no idea this was even on the agenda for tonight or what the topic was, but I can tell you that on that corner of Garfield and Wisconsin, my car was totaled on that corner fifteen years ago because of the same problem. I was going south on Wisconsin Avenue. Somebody was at the stop sign on Garfield Street, did not see around the cars parked there. Hit me while my daughter was six weeks old in my car, totaled my car because they didn't see that. So I totally agree, just a couple of parking places right there to be able to see around that corner. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I did total, my car was totaled.
Thanks.
Because of that intersection.
Cliff, is there, you mentioned you and your wife both have the parking situation or whatever. I'm just, I'm not aware of how big, how much room is there in that alley back there for parking?
There's, I can park on the grass. I don't have, I got a truck, two trucks. But in the wintertime, walking through the snow and that before it gets cleaned off, I can't even shovel stuff.
And do you only use the front door of the residence? Is that, you don't use the back door?
Very seldom.
Patio or whatever?
Keith?
Thanks. I don't mean to be facetious or a smart aleck or anything, but doesn't anybody have driveways on Wisconsin Avenue?
Just that.
We're talking, we're talking the seven hundred block though.
Yeah, but there's no, I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding something here.
The seven hundred block is, is all the, the library, the bank, it's all, it's the business district, so.
That's why I said I don't mean to be facetious.
No, no.
Parking areas that are very limited.
Very limited, thank you.
You know, and then when you get to the six hundred block, which is what he's talking about in regards to the house on Garfield Street, a lot of those houses either have shared driveways or they're the narrow driveways with a single car garage. They're older residences, so, you know, definitely in today's world where most people have probably three cars. I, I could see where that, you know, becomes a little bit more of a need.
I just had to get my bearings there. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any comments? Mike?
I guess I'm going to support this, this ordinance just because it's a safety issue and I think it's a, it's a, it's a compromise. Instead of doing the whole street, we're just doing two parking stalls. So I'm going to support this ordinance, so. Change.
Sir, any other questions or comments? I'd, I'd have to agree. I mean, as, as far as like, and Lori, I didn't, I didn't know that you had a car totaled there. And like I said, I see that every day on that corner and it's, it's just, it's very dangerous.
You're there every day.
Yeah, and it's, and I've been approached by a couple of folks also that, and I'm sorry for the inconvenience Cliff, but it, it's just a safety issue. And I, I think that, you know, like Darren had said, if we put another stop sign there, it's just going to create a, a problem unless we eliminate some, a stop sign somewhere else along Wisconsin Avenue. So if there isn't any other discussion, if I can get a motion to either approve or deny ordinance twenty eighteen dash six.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion for twenty eighteen zero six.
You got a second?
I'll second.
All right, you got a, a motion by King, second by Stutz to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash six, amending section sixteen point zero nine parking restrictions. Can I get a roll call please?
Keith?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving down to number three, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero seven, an ordinance change eight point zero five of the building code. And that's, this one Chuck, is this one, we're just cleaning up a lot of language. Pete went through.
Yes.
This ordinance and, and if you take a look through there, it's, it's just, you know, eliminating some stuff and, and just making it a little bit cleaner. Pete does this from time to time just so it's a little bit easier to, to follow and make a little sense, bring it up to date. Is there any discussion on, on this ordinance? I will make a motion to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash seven, an ordinance change eight point zero five of the building code. Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, motion by Strider, second by Price to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero seven. Can I get a roll call please?
Keith?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
All right. Communications, just I had a couple of things. I know I had talked to Ann a little bit about new trustees. There's a local government class one oh one. The next one is September twenty eighth. I don't know if you got that information Randy, but it's very helpful. I think Keith, have you been through it? You've been through it. And then Mike, I know you've gone through it. I've gone through it a couple of times. It's, it's, it's very helpful. Kind of get your bearings if you have any questions and you meet some other folks that are new to the position. So that's a, that's a good thing. And I've met with some of the department heads, I've met with Nick and Jake and Darren and Darren Parsons. And I appreciate them sitting down with me. I'm just trying to get an, you know, an idea what, what, I'm new to this position, so. Seeing if there's any concerns or anything, and I encourage the rest of the board. I know Randy, you've talked to Jake and I know Ann, you've talked to Jake and other department heads and Keith also. But everybody said, you know, open door. If you have any questions or concerns, you're not, you know, comfortable speaking in a board meeting or email or whatever. All the department heads are more than willing to sit down and talk with you. And if you have any questions on like an upcoming agenda item or something you don't understand, please give them a call or email and it'll help all of us when we get to the board level. That way, everybody's on the same page. So, any other communications?
I just want to make a comment about the stone. I think it looks nice and that Optimus Little logo, I think it fits in there dry ice. I mean, you have it on our.
I asked the board with their opinion, because if, if not, you know, I'm going to, I'd like to give us the go ahead tomorrow and.
How big is that? Like three, four feet?
I think it's bigger.
It's about ten inches thick. It's about eight or nine feet wide.
Wow, nice.
But it's, it's, it's stone, you know, there's going to be, they're going to build up around it. So I mean, it's not going to, you know, they're going to have shrubs and lanterns stowed around and everything else. So it's about, about seven, eight thousand pounds.
Cool, not going anywhere.
So you'll read that when you're coming down?
It's going to be on the corner of Prospect and Winnebago, so you'll see it, it'll be on an angle there.
Okay, very nice.
So you probably will see some work starting in the next week or two. We're going to put a, have to put a foundation and a wall that it sets on.
Is there going to be a light on that or anything?
There will be spotlights as well. Alliance is putting energy in the back corner, the southwest corner.
Nice. Any other communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? You got a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You got a second? Motion by Price, second by Will to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you everybody for coming.